Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call the West Fargo City Commission meeting July 16th to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 I'd like to welcome the public this evening to our meeting, and I'd also like to extend a thank you to all of our staff and department heads that are joining us this evening on behalf of the commission. We always appreciate your expertise in being with us this evening. We'll start the evening by some changes that are taking place on the agenda. Item F, June Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Fund Balances, has been added to the Consent Agenda. Regular Agenda item number six will be removed from the agenda. Items 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 have been moved from the Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda. The West Fargo Events Contract has been removed from consideration from the Regular Agenda. There were a number of questions on some content. Item number 10, Review of West Fargo Fire Department Budget, has been added to the Regular Agenda. Items 11, A 15-Minute Bond Presentation, has been added to the Regular Agenda. We have the Doherty people who attend this evening, and we're going to give them some time to share what they do for us. So with that being said, the Chair would entertain a motion, please, to accept the changes and approve the order of the agenda.
Make a motion to accept the changes?
Thank you Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please? Thank you Eric, Commissioner Jurdavich, been moved in second. All those in favor to accept the agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes. The minutes have been distributed for July 2nd, 2018. Any additions, corrections, comments from the Commissioner on those minutes? That will be approved. Thank you Brad, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of July 2nd as distributed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Building permits. Do any of my fellow Commissioners have any questions or comments about building permits? Chair would entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you Commissioner Simmons, is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jurdavich, been moved in second to approve the building permits. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Regular Agenda. Public hearing, we'll have a public hearing for a petition for partial vacation of a buffer easement in Goldenwood First and Fourth Editions. Mr. Shockley.
Excuse me, Mayor, would you like to hit the Consent Agenda first?
My apologies. We're still new at this. We're in a learning stage, Mike.
We'll get her done.
How did I do that? Okay. The next order of business will be the approval of the Consent Agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you Commissioner. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you Eric. Been moved in second to approve the Consent Agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again Commissioner Thorstedt. Moving on to the Regular Agenda, again, public hearing will open for a petition for partial vacation of a buffer easement in Goldenwood First and Fourth Editions. Mr. Shockley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, I'm a member of the West Fargo City Commission. I have a very short item. Homeowners have requested a buffer easement in Goldenwood Editions. I've talked to them, they're very ar- 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 in the town, kind of new residential development, such as north. And they, a buffer easement, they're just along Cass Highway 10, or 12th Avenue, and it originally was 60 feet, in depth. They're requesting to remove that 60 feet and move it down to 30 feet. After inquiring my understanding, the reason why it was originally 60 feet is Cass County Highway 10 was previously a rural road, and when they developed, if they wanted more of an offset from the rural road, now that it's primarily spent their money for the buffer easement, the homeowners are requesting the change. They've all signed up for the petition. The homeowners are all the costs associated with it. By the century code, you're required to have a public hearing to typically object. You can use your objections. Once again, all the homeowners have signed up on the petition, request. Once the public hearing is done, you are both to either approve or reject the petition to vacate portion of the buffer easement. And I just want to have you do the content of the petition.
Thank you. Mr. Shockley. At this time, we will go from the public hearing and go to a, go to a public hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to speak to this item on the agenda? Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Hearing none, we're going to close the public hearing. We'll go back to the Regular Agenda. Commissioners, what are your wishes? Comments? Questions for John or for Tim? There are some provisions and the like that staff has provided us, so if there's anything additional questions?
There isn't, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you Commissioner. Is there a second, please? Been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the petition for partial vacation of a buffer easement in Glenwood One and Fourth Edition, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is property tax exemption for Cargill. Mr. Matt Marshall.
Thank you Commission President and Commission. Second. I'm here to talk to you today about Cargill. They're considering an expansion out at their plant in West Fargo. The way that this process works is that the local Cargill plant has an idea that would make them more efficient and increase their capacity. They have to go to their board and petition for the money, and a board sort of decides where they're going to make their capital improvements. The Cargill plant, a brief history, it broke ground in the summer of 1979. Throughout the years, it's, it became a sunflower processing plant once it first opened, but then added the capacity to do flaxseed and then canola oil as well back in the late 80s. They had a pretty large substantial rebuild in 2013, which increased that, the operational capabilities, and this next iteration would do the same thing. It would increase their refining capability and increase the production as well. The current plant employs about 95 people. It started refining oil in 1991. And what they end up doing is they refine the oil into a food-grade product or very close to it, then they ship it off for processing to bring it out to market. What they would end up doing is this would allow them to continue that refining process, and I have a couple of representatives from Cargill who can explain that process a little better. But then it would also get them closer to the point where they could then hopefully one-day package. This is a photo of the current refinery that they have onsite, and this is the, a rendering of the new and old. So what I'm going to do is invite a Cargill representative up to assist in this case, help talk about what's in that picture.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Nelson. I'm the project manager at Cargill for the new refinery. Alright, so this picture right here, okay, here we go. So this right here would be a representation of the new building we're talking about adding onsite. The previous picture was this building that we had built in 2013 as part of the expansion that Matt had mentioned. In that year, we built this one and this one right here. On the new refinery, we build that, and then we'd have to connect that to the rest of our process. So we have some bridge work, which is shown in pink, and then, right here, that is, this is our tank farm. Essentially, we're just trying to get our refining process of our oils that we process in the other part of the plant out to storage, and then that would go, as Matt mentioned, to load out and for the processing for our finished product. And right here is just to represent where it is.
Again, this is, this is their location. They're just south of 12th Avenue, up in our industrial area to the north of town. And this is an oversized, or overhead photo of the facility today. North would be this way. Again, this is the tank farm they talked about, and that addition is well within their property limits. So the proposed project would, would cost them somewhere between $45 and $55 million. May go a little over that. They're getting some of their bids back and seeing that some of the construction costs and equipment costs are a little higher, but it doesn't necessarily impact what our taxable value will be one way or the other. It's just better news that they're investing more in the community. The corporation, again, the way this, this works is that they go to a board. The board has four other options that do this same type of thing, where they would invest the money. And so we're hopeful that this incentive would, would bring that money here as opposed to Iowa or one of their other options. You know, over the next 15 years, because of this investment, you know, the city would get over $3 million in additional tax revenue, and that includes operational costs and things that they're able to do tomorrow that they aren't available to do today, and the taxes associated with that as well. And then the state and other municipalities would get about 6.7 additional revenue over the next 15 years. The average savings for them over the 10 years is $73,000, but yet they are still paying taxes on the stuff that's already there. So again, this is not going backward in any way, it's only on the future project and the associated taxes. And with that, I'm available for any questions, as is Jason Shook from Cargill. He's here to talk about the process or anything else you'd like.
Thank you Matt. Questions?
Matt, you want to clarify the cost of the expansion again? I thought you said 45 million to 55?
45 to 55 million dollars is their capital cost. However, that, a lot of that's in equipment and labor. That doesn't necessarily all translate into taxable value. Taxable value is what Nick has looked at, and he's estimating right around $5 million.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
So their costs may go up. He's, they're, they're trying to get their costs down, and Jason could probably talk about that, but our taxable value probably won't change much because it's still going to be a building, and Nick's looked at that already.
Great question Commissioner. Any other questions for Matt? Or Jason?
More of a comment, Mayor. One of the things that, that Matt, you talked about, and I appreciate it, but one of the things that they're not talking about is that if we do not do this, and Cargill goes somewhere else and doesn't invest money, maybe not today, maybe not tomorrow, but sometime, the odds are good they will close this plant. Because Cargill's one of those companies where if they don't invest and keep it going, it won't go. So we really need to keep that in mind. This isn't just a matter of economic development for the future, it's keeping what we got right now as well.
I agree with that Commissioner Simmons. The other thing I'd like to add is, Cargill's also been a great corporate partner. I believe a couple of years ago, they, they spent, or gave a grant to $10,000 or thereabouts to our fire department for equipment, and they've continued to be a good local supporter. So you're right, this isn't all about adding X number of jobs, or it's going to be on the tax rules immediately. It's eventually going to be on our tax rules. I agree with you, we're, we're looking at hopefully a long-term commitment to the city by them reinvesting in their existing properties.
Right.
Thank you gentlemen, great comments. Alright. What's your pleasure?
Excuse me, Mr. President, a public hearing.
Any other comments? Alright, we'll go from the Regular Agenda to the public hearings. Open it to the public for any comments that they might have. Are there any comments for the public regarding the property tax exemption application for Cargill and their expansion project? Is there any public comment on the Cargill expansion project? Is there any public comment on the Cargill expansion project? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Matt? Anything additional?
I'll make a motion, that's all you need, Mayor. I'll make a motion to accept the property tax exemption.
Is there a second, please?
A second.
And moved in second to accept the, approve, excuse me, the property tax exemption for the application for Cargill's expansion project. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Matt, do you have parts of two and three, or are they together? Do we still have to do number?
Excuse me, typically what happens is I, I present the project, then they open the public hearing, and then it comes back to you, and they all kind of run together. Technically, they're two different items, but they're done sort of in conjunction. Sorry about that.
This is a novice running this meeting, so please forgive me. Number four, second reading and final plot approval of the heavy addition and rezoning from AA Agricultural to R1A Single Family Dwelling. Mr. Silver.
Thank you, Your Honor, and Commissioner members. This is second reading, there's not been any changes to the plot, however, at the request of Commissioner Simmons, we did have the city attorney prepare an acknowledgement, which was sent out to you today. In the acknowledgement, it simply states that the applicant understands, acknowledges that they're going to be responsible for potential special assessments in the future. They have the same rights though as any other property owner, just acknowledging, of course, that they have that. One thing I just want to add to is typically, there's improvements with the project, and we have a south-side sewer hookup fee that's required of any property south of I-94. There's no assessment district for this property, there's no improvement, so they actually have to pay that upfront. It's not a major amount, but they understand that and are submitting that, so I want to...
What is that dollar amount, Tim? Do you know?
About $25,000. So they have to have that paid as a condition of final plot approval, but there are no other changes, and they have complied with all the other requirements, so we're recommending approval.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions of Tim? What's your, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion, Mayor, to approve the second reading and final plot approval.
Thank you Commissioners, is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mike. Been moved in second to final plot approval of the heavy addition and rezoning from agricultural to R1A Single Family Dwelling. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number five, second reading of zoning ordinance amendment to sections 4-01 Planning and Zoning Commission, 4-02 Comprehensive Plan, and 4-0302 Replacement of Official Zoning Maps. Mr. Silver.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is again, the second reading for the proposed amendments to the Planning and Zoning Commission, come plan and place an official zoning map. Just again, to highlight for your knowledge again, is the area that we swapped with the city of Fargo, the ET area, which I'm highlighting right here. We're amending our plans and ordinances to accommodate that, so no major changes, just catching that accommodation, so. We will sign this if approved tonight, and this will be our official zoning map. We also keep an interactive zoning map updated of all the different zoning changes that we do throughout the time and years. So the last time we updated it was 2015.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions of Tim? What's your pleasure?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you Eric. It's been moved, is there a second, please?
Second.
And a second to the zoning ordinance amendment to sections 4.01 Planning and Zoning Commission, 4.02 Comprehensive Plan, and 4-0302 Replacement of Official Zoning. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is number six, to review the Henco Renaissance Zone Application. Cali?
That one?
Is that one that was removed? Oh, it's still on my agenda.
Mine too.
My apologies. Next order on the agenda is review bid tab for sanitary sewer improvement, District number 1319. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the commission. Open bids last week for a purpose project in the Gellers area, we have, we may have to do it. Uh, this gave a pretty good, still we've worked with them in the past. I recommend ordering a contract CC Steel for their base bid. Eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars, fifty-six cents. Right to your estimate. At the time of bid was eight hundred five thousand dollars, so just a hair over our estimate by purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any questions of Mr. Scott? It's the commission's pleasure.
Make a motion.
It's been moved to approve the bid tab for sanitary sewer improvement of District number 1319. Is there, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second, mine. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business is number eight on our agenda, accept the petition for adding improvements to sewer, water, storm, and street improvement District number 1305. Be a change order to the general contract, authorize engineer to prepare final change order documents, and authorize the city staff to review and approve the final change order for sewer, water, storm, and street improvements, District 1305.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is John Unis. Mr. Bullis is actually out of town.
Knew that you weren't James, but okay.
So, we're the developer for Wild's 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th is before you, again, and 11th is going to be coming forward shortly as well. And as the improvements for 9th went in, we've been finalizing plans for 11th, and that involved finalizing the location of the detention ponds, the storm sewer lift station, getting three-phase power to where the proposed storm sewer lift station is. And as we kind of worked with staff and figured out pricing, it made sense to get some of these improvements in before Cass County Electric had to get a big power line through there. So that's kind of the impetus of why we are asking to change order some of these improvements onto the 9th, so we can kind of finalize the whole storm sewer detention pond facility out there.
And this is the area south of 52nd?
South of 52nd, it'd be immediately adjacent to Wild's 8th Edition, which is on the west side of 9th Street.
New home for Habitat for Humanity is one of the lots out there. So is there any questions of John? Commissioners?
Perhaps more of Justin, is there any concerns or Chris with this at all? Jumping, jumping ahead like this a little bit, or?
Well, I'd like to at least start by clarifying it from a legal aspect. Our obligation authority to submit an assessment district to act work. If I'm correct, if I'm wrong, John, but the maximum allowed by the century code is 20% of the original estimate. So if this project was, um, number five million dollars, the maximum allowed change order would be $100,000. So from a legal aspect, just wanted to make sure that's clear. I know in the agenda packet, there's a lot of estimates in there. I haven't spent the time myself to discern the cost between what they're requesting versus what would be allowed. Beyond that, the other concern that we have is that, has been discussed, is the fact that the plot is not finished yet. So it's not, you could still consider the request to add this would be a change order, but in order to start designing the improvements, we would probably hold up on that, so the plot is further along.
Tim, do you have something for us?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, this typically is not the way we'd like to see it be done. We have reviewed the plot before Planning Commission last Tuesday, so I'd be opposed to approving an improvement district for this in clear terms of planning. However, if there are efficiencies for cost savings, et cetera, I leave that for the commission to make that consideration. But there are a number of issues, I think specifically with the number of lots we have in the community right now serviced, that I want to discuss as part of the plot, and we haven't been given the opportunity yet to do that. So that's just one thing, I think just a little patience on it would be good. However, if cost savings can be had, I don't want to stand in the way of that, because that's not my, that's not my...
When do you think we could discern that, Tim?
Well, tonight, actually, on the Consent Agenda, we proposed advertising for the public hearing to be held at the next City Commission meeting. That would be the first reading, so we could first discuss that. I'd feel a lot more comfortable approving an improvement district after at least you had that first reading in public hearing.
Thank you. Any other question, Commissioner?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, yes. And I'm assuming our staff agrees with that? I see he had snotty. I'm not comfortable with setting a precedent here myself, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine, we can table this until the discussion of the plot at the same time.
That would be great, if you'd be willing. I'd make a motion then right away, Mayor, that we table this until the next meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Been moved in second to table item number eight. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. John, thank you for coming this evening, we understand your intent, but we'll stay Item number nine, address the concerns regarding Awake LLC. Is this Ms. Abau?
Yes.
Michelle, good evening.
Good evening. So I recently just opened Awake Lounge in West Fargo, next to the Domino's and Maxwell in that area. What's happened is, from the time we opened, the second day, every single day, police officer has been called, every single day. And the problem is, prior to opening this location, everybody knew what it was going to be. And talking to the officers that was coming on the scene, they alerted me that this is a consistent pattern, especially with that location has had almost three to four different owners. And that is a consistent pattern that everybody that goes there or owns that particular building have always had consistency with police coming there, and it looks bad for business. Nobody wants to come to a place where it's like, every five seconds, I have to go to the DJ, lower the noise. Well, when the noise is lowered, it's loud talking. So then that noise is overpowering the building as well. And it's, my business is not running, that's driving away customers, that's, I have to pay bills. And it was something that my landlord didn't tell me that previous tenants was having the same problem with the neighbors. Nobody let me know prior to signing this lease that it was this type of problem. Now, I'm willing to work with my neighbors and resolving it the best way possible, because I don't want police coming to my establishment, and I don't want to keep them up. And I know they don't want me to keep them up with the music, but get into a common ground in which we could coexist in the same scenery without disturbing each other is like my ultimate goal. However, I did look into soundproofing the area, that was not in my budget. Because that wasn't in my budget, that's a financial responsibility where... Because that wasn't in my budget, that's a financial responsibility where I feel as though me, either me, the landlord, and the, um, next door neighbors could come to certain agreement with because it's quite spendy. I have came and filed a complaint as well, a concern in the multiple times. Last time, last weekend, I had about four cops coming, four different times.
Why are they coming, ma'am?
They're saying that the music is too loud and that they can hear it, but how the setup is, is that it's our building, there's a fence, there's another gap in before their houses that are there.
In back to you.
Yes. Yep. There's another one before there. Uh, the first time they came, they was like, oh, maybe because the back door, people was outside and all of that. I said, okay, no problem. I will make sure that none of my staff use the back door, which is very inconvenient for me because when I get delivery or anything happening, back door is the easy way not going into my business with beer bottles or this or that while in the middle of customers right there. So that's already an inconvenience for me taking that hit. And then now adding more to it. It's like it's consistent.
Ask a question, please. So the doors open? Are the windows open?
No, nothing is open. The first time.
And your complaints aren't from other peoples in the strip mall? It's from the housing development behind you? Mike?
So I trust an assistant chief is here that, um, the reason the police are going is because you're getting complaints from the neighbors, correct? You aren't proactively going out and, and just making noise assessments on your own? Is that correct?
Yes.
Deputy Chief Boyer?
The first time, the first time we opened, we did have a celebration where it was like we did some grilling outside. It wasn't a consistent thing. It was just like, hey, we opened, some friends and family came out to celebrate. That was the first time the officer came on. Once we alerted them, like that was the one and only time. After that, that's that consistent pattern of the police being called.
Thank you.
Chief, again to my question, if I can, as assistant chief, the reason you go over there is because you received a complaint from the citizen, is that correct?
Yes, mayor and commissioners, we're responding to calls for service. The officers are not driving by, um, producing noise on their own. They're responding to calls for service and they're documenting, um, eight times where there's been a noise violation.
Over what period of time?
Uh, I believe since they opened on.
Only been July 1st.
July 1st.
Eight, eight calls for service.
Eight calls for noise. There's four other calls for service, some at the request of Rochelle.
Yes.
So I'm just calling the calls for service for noise. We did work with, tried to work with Rochelle by having an officer actually standing inside of the homes of one of the other tenants, working on a volume that would be acceptable. That was done a week and a half ago. It appears that there was a resolution at that time. However, the music continues to be turned up by somebody, and that's when the noise complaints are then come back in.
Well, then we all could definitely agree noise travel quicker at night than it do at daytime. When this test was done, it was during the day. It's construction on that road. It's a lot going on, on 42nd. So during the day, we did ask if an officer could retest it before we opened for business around nine. So nobody showed up. We stood there, nobody showed up to just test that noise complaint at night. And that noise didn't, we didn't touch the dial or anything. That same night, two police did come, that, that night again. Working, like I said, and I even let him know, working with the police is not something where we're opposed to, we want to. I made my intention clear when we first opened up. I made sure I talked to both the chief of police and, um, uh, the head of the police department. We all had a whole conversation and agreement. This is my intention in open the place. If I see something that's not supposed to happen, my first intent is to call you guys to have things handled. So we have always been on the same page with regarding that situation.
So Ms. Aba, excuse me, but so from what I heard from Jerry, that you had an agreement and understanding about the volume? Did the volume go up after that?
No, it did not. But during the day in which we did it, it was construction that was going on.
Right. So say the volume was eight, they said you can go to eight. Has it always been at that number or did you go?
We haven't done anything to it. It has stayed that number. And that's why I said we had another one for that exact same night because, uh, we made it clear in my case, at night, the volume travels a little bit because everything is at day. Everything is quiet, so to hear things echoing and all of that is going to be more, uh, vague compared to in the night than day. We have constructions during the day. When they came, that was happening. So there's no way you could hear the construction going, here's our building.
I see what you're saying.
Here's a lot of things, a lot of things is happening right there.
Excuse me. Deputy Chief, you have any of the reports and anything that you want to share with us, with the commissioners or?
Uh, there's no reports, it's just calls for service or officers made comments. I will say that I did go out there myself last Wednesday evening, stood outside from 10:30 to 11:11. There was noise, uh, you could hear in the backyards from, from the neighbors that have been calling. I did go inside and spoke with, uh, other people. Rachel was not there at that time. Um, we turned it down again. Um, while we were inside the bar, um, it was loud enough where we actually had to exit to go outside to speak, um, but there was no volume outside that we could hear at that time, so.
In front?
Um, in back. Um, made sure that I was standing in the back by the neighbors so that they could make the complaints. So there is, uh, depending upon the song that's played, sometimes there's some volume adjustments that may be occurring at that time, but, uh, there does definitely appear to be some noise volume. Some of the officers have made comments that, uh, the music can be heard from a hundred feet away, which would be a violation of our, our noise ordinance.
So I'm a little, I'm sorry, mayor, yeah, because I'm a little confused, Jerry. You had, I had seen something a while back about some, I mean, we have nothing in here but this letter. Where's the written documentation of your officers going there and what they're hearing? And you have that in your hand or something? They're missing part of, we don't have anything here to look at.
It wasn't forwarded.
It's not here. That's what I'm saying. It's not in our files.
I just pulled this up today. I just got this information today.
May I ask a question, assistant chief? We've had three other, like she stated, three other owners of this property. Did you have, uh, a bunch of noise complaints? I don't recall any ever reaching the commission any, at any rate.
Yeah, I don't remember any reaching the commission level. We did have some, I believe, when Divas and Rockstars was there when they first opened, there was some complaints that came in, but those issues were addressed and then that went away. Um, there was anything other than that that I, I'm not aware of.
Okay, and then, uh, when we approved your license, you had a manager named Zheng, I think it's named Zheng, and Huo or whatever. Is she still your manager?
Yes, she is still our manager.
Is she on, on at nights or?
Yes, she is still on a promise this last night as a manager for our bar area.
Okay, and is she aware of the noise concerns?
Yes, she may have fully aware that the officers do come in for the noise complaint, but that's when this is happening, that's more of the owners and the DJs that's going on. That's who in regards, they talk to me, I talk directly to the DJ because that's our problem.
Okay, and a question regarding the DJs, just because I've seen this on your, your Facebook page, and I understand these are their advertisements and not yours, but one of them shows dancers, which is a violation of our law.
That's not dancing.
And the other one showed kind of risque poses, and I'm not saying that's happening because I haven't been there to prove it, but I want to make sure that type of activity is not happening because that would be a violation of our ordinances.
So those are music videos there. We, whoever's songs is out, for example.
Right, but these DJs are advertising, I'm going to be at your place on this night, and the other one's saying this night, and they've run a little video there that shows the DJ and their show.
That was at my establishment. I know the exact video you're talking about.
There's a couple of videos on your Facebook site right now. One was, said they were performing there on the 13th. It was a young lady, I believe. And the other one was a gentleman, and the gentleman that shows, at least in his video, I'm saying this is only the video, that he shows dancers, and the young lady shows what I could say would be a risque video, and I, I hope those kind of activities aren't happening there.
No, I could definitely assure you that they are not happening. Those are videos that was done at other things. They're DJ, they make promos prior to their event in which they're hosting. So that has nothing to do with the videos in which they had prior to that, them hosting in my facility. None of that goes.
I understand they're two different things. It's their own promotional videos, but I just hope that that show is not carrying over to your facilities. Uh, that, another question I have here is when, when you talked with Detective Cruff, when he interviewed you, you said that you're just looking to still be a standard bar out of that location with, and quote, to get into more of a Comfort Vegas type setting with couches. Do you believe the operation as you're running it now is consistent with that statement?
Yes, I do.
Because I guess I'm not aware of other facilities that are having the noise issue. Now, granted, not all of them are proximity to residential, but.
Yeah. So what, what I made my interest very clear in how I was running my bar, I let you guys know that it is options if they want to sit down in a lounge kind of scenery because it is kind of a performance. There will be various live jazz bands and all of that going to be happening. We have not gotten into that just because of the noise complaint. I don't want to bring somebody to perform live jazz while my noise complaint is going on. I am still running my business up to coal in exactly what I brought my proposal to you guys the first time. Nothing has changed. Now, in relation to other bars in which you consistently keep bringing up, my, there's not facing directly to neighbors.
We do have some that are right next to neighbors.
Not directly how it is. I'm literally.
I can argue the fact, but yes, that we do have some, but, uh, that's another, another point. I guess my last question is, is how do you propose we rectify the situation? Because the neighbors, I got a call again today from one of those individuals that.
You got a call today? That's ironic because we're not open.
That's sort of a tough weekend, and I, no, obviously our, our police staff is dealing with well. How would you suggest we rectify the situation?
Well, that's why I'm here, to come up with a common ground.
Do you have any suggestions?
My, I just said for us to soundproof the room. If that's the case, I'm not going to go full way to soundproof. That wasn't in my budget. So that money is going to come fifty, fifty, but fifty, uh, they're going to come from somewhere.
Right, thank you. Deputy Chief, you have a recommendation to the commission?
Uh.
Does the department have a recommendation?
Department at this time, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, uh, the noise complaints we receive are almost daily, um, phone calls I receive, or I believe it's the same one's commission, of course, that is receiving, uh, from neighbors. I would like to find some common ground. My fear is, is that when Rachel's not there, um, the volume is being turned up and that common ground that we think we're coming to is just not being followed. So, um, at this point, I don't know, um, what the answer is. Um, I don't feel that putting that expense on sharing any soundproofing with residents is prudent by any means. Um, that's a business decision, that's between her and, um, her landlord. So that would be up to them. Um, I will say that, you know, we will continue to respond to all noise complaints, uh, that we receive. Um, neighbors have been instructed to call us, um, when, when they are occurring. Uh, when I talked to one of them today, they were actually on hold for a while, that's why they hung up, and there wasn't another complaint made because the dispatcher said they're on 911. So as far as coming up with a solution, other than just there's not going to be any music until soundproofing is done, I don't, I don't have any other suggestions at this point. I don't want to ruin somebody's business in, in beginning a, a business in our community. I'm cautious, I'm very aware of that. But at the same time, um, residents have a quality of life, that there's, there's got to be a happy round here somewhere.
So the, the night manager, this other lady, uh, you had dialogue with her directly?
No, uh, I have not. When I stopped there the last Wednesday night, I was out from 10:30 to 11:30, had a great conversation with the other owners, uh, but I have not met the, the manager.
Can, uh, mayor's okay?
Please.
Can you somehow, chief, or, I'll give you, Rachel, can you go in and, and somehow maximize that loudness so it will only go so loud?
Um, I have my DJ here.
Because it sounds like that's where the problem is. We need to lower the level a little bit, and you need to set it so nobody else can touch it. Whether you put it in a box, a lock box, or what have you?
So what we can do is, like I requested, have that same thing we did during the day, try it out at night prior to opening, so we can then see where that noise is traveling. Because like I keep saying, there's a difference between the day and night.
If it's going to the back door, Rachel, the homes, it's going to the back, it doesn't matter. It's getting there. It's too loud, that's the bottom line of my thinking. It's too loud.
Yeah, but then trying to find where it will be that button, I'm saying, getting it adjusted to the day and setting it, it still may be loud at night because it's quieter. That's what I'm saying, before we lock it with that lock box.
We did that last Wednesday.
At night?
Yes. Last Wednesday night, I was there, got it down to a level that was acceptable, that I stood outside, I couldn't hear it going into the residence. I wasn't in their homes, but I was in the backyard.
The point is.
Something has changed.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. The point is here is that, uh, our city police department and its officers have invested a lot of time and effort to try and find a, a, a point of which, uh, is acceptable to the neighborhood. They're going to lose patience and they're going to demand that the five of us up here do something about that. And, uh, that's never going to be a good resolution for you. Fact of the matter is, if it's disrupting the neighborhood, we have to address the issue. And the issue is the volume of the music. So with all due respect to the gentleman that you referred to a minute ago, if he's one of the DJs, then you as the owner have to impose on those people, have to impress on those people, that it is critical for you in order to operate your business in this community that we, that we continue like that. Uh, Mr. Shockley, I'm going to call on you, uh, for your opinion on what the process will be if we cannot come to a resolution here from a legal standpoint, please.
Well, from a legal standpoint, if the license is a continual violation of the federal license department or any other or specific city, city commission has the right to revoke the ordinance, or revoke their license. Uh, we had previous establishment within the last year that was violating ordinance. Uh, my job as the attorney is to bring that forward to the city commission, uh, the city commission to act revoke that license. Uh, and they did put in, uh, that commission did put a requirement that they could reapply for another two or two, three years, because I understand it was two years. We're aware of the issue. We can also cite them in municipal court, and I'll take that with the side of the U.S., but if these violations continue, my recommendation would be to start citing them in municipal court. Um, and then if it violates the noise ordinance, it will also violate, it will lead to a complication of their license.
Rochelle?
Are they not though, still on it, like a, I mean, we have every right to, pardon?
Operation.
Operation or period or whatever, are they not still? We, we have every right to pull that, that.
Yeah, the, so the, there is no, you don't have a specific, you don't have a right to have a license in, um, as far as.
Right.
The commission for essentially good cause can revoke the license at any time, uh, and that good cause violating ordinance with not conducting your business in a manner that is, uh, permitted, uh, undertaking legal activities at the establishment, uh, operating a public business.
So, okay, so that's all I want to know, John. There's no point in all this court stuff. We don't need that. I mean, we can just revoke the license if we want to. Right, okay. Okay, so.
So, Ms. Aba, do you understand the, the nature of what we're saying here is that we've, you know, the, the police department has been very patient in my estimation, and I believe that, uh, we have sworn when we were, uh, became part of the commission that we must enforce the ordinances. So it's incumbent upon us for the public that we have to do that. So what I'm suggesting to you is that if it's acceptable to the police department, we have another week to deal with this. And if there's any more reports, then Deputy Chief Boyer, we would request that we have you forward to us, the commission, the incident reports immediately, and, uh, along with our legal counsel, Mr. Shockley, and, uh, you know, we need to do whatever we need to do to protect the, uh, the interests of the public. And we certainly encourage you to, uh, visit with your staff and make sure that, uh, they're, they're following the rules because, uh, uh, it won't be good, the results can't be good for you if, if we don't follow the rules and our ordinances.
Well, what is the business noise level?
It's, uh, fifty decibels. It's, uh, fifty decibels because it goes into residential areas. The fault under that, all the other part of the noise ordinance also talks about hearing a noise fifty feet away, which would be also where your business falls.
Do you have a decibel meter, reader?
We do not have one. We have access to one through our enforcement.
But then how did you guys, if you never brought one on site, how did you guys figure that?
They stood at the neighbor's yard and you could hear it fifty feet away. It's, it's either or, ma'am. It's either or.
It's either or.
I, I think what we're saying, Mayor, if you don't mind, I think what we're saying, or at least I think me and the mayor are saying this, I'm thinking the commission will agree. I'm thinking we will give you, we're willing to give you one more chance at this, but you turn the volume down, period. That's the bottom line. And if you don't, then you're gonna lose your liquor license. It's that simple, in all honesty. So, you need to work with our Assistant Chief and Jerry. I really honestly want to see the reports the next time, if she, which she probably will, if she does, then great. But I want to see the reports in these files because there's nothing here for us to look at. I realize Mike read them off in email, but I mean, they need to be in the file. So, the bottom line is you get one more chance. Okay?
Honestly speaking, and I have to say this, seem like because we are a minority kind of business, you don't want this here. Because it doesn't make no sense. And the way in which you're saying it is highly offended.
That's not true.
Yes, it is true.
There were three other businesses in there too. We did the same thing to that. We, we had these same conversations. I believe you were probably told some of us, I would think.
No, I was not. I was not told the noise meter. I was not told none of that. And for you, I felt attacked by you, especially you.
I'm not attacking you at all.
That's how I feel.
I'm not attacking you at all, ma'am. I'm not at all. I'm telling you, you just need to turn the volume down. Is that...
Yeah, but you're like, you're, this, this is my first time appearing here. You're gonna tell me this is my last chance of one week. It doesn't take a week to train everybody to get done.
This is the first time that you, it's come to the commission, but this is the eighth time that it's been in front of the police department.
Which I've been working with him.
Well, and, and, and we're very grateful for that. You're one of our valued businesses in our community. But we have to, we have to follow the ordinances.
Orders. You guys keep talking about it, but this is the first time you guys are letting me know. If I wasn't gonna bring it, I came in to bring it to you guys. I did that. They didn't set it up. I set that up to come to a common ground. So, what are you talking about?
All we're doing is telling you to turn the volume down.
That's not how you said it.
Well, I'm sorry if I said it wrong. I apologize, but I'm saying now, please turn your volume down.
You guys will hear from my lawyer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief, or Deputy Chief. Appreciate your time. The next item of business is gonna be the West Fargo Fire Department budget. Chief Fuller.
Hi, Mr. President and members of the commission. Good evening. I'm here tonight to, uh, discuss or review our 2019 budget, uh, for next year. On the front page of the slideshow here is our core values of the fire department and, uh, also our mission statement. Uh, the bottom line up front, what we're, uh, looking at this year, it's a total budget of, uh, two million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, uh, broken down between salary and benefits, operations, and capital improvements. And I believe everyone in the commission has our actual line item budget in, uh, in their packets today. Uh, it counts for seventy percent of our budget going to salary and benefits and, uh, roughly the other thirty percent split between operations and, and capital improvements. Major changes that this budget cycle brings about is, uh, four additional full-time personnel. And that's gonna get us to twenty-four hour staffing and reducing our after-hours response times, uh, to making it more in line with the current, uh, duty hour response model, which I'm proud to say we're meeting our response guidelines eighty-eight percent of the time. So, I'd like to continue that throughout a twenty-four hour period. Uh, transitioning our, our volunteer staff to, uh, paid-on-call staff, which was gonna increase our recruitment and retention. Uh, we are adding a second aerial apparatus, a ladder truck, to the south part of town. Uh, with all the building going on down there, we have, uh, when ISO came this year, we were notified that we do have a, a deficiency within a certain mile radius. That ladder truck on the north end of town just doesn't cut it for the south end of town. It needs to be two and a half miles. Uh, we're also gonna replace a nineteen ninety-five engine at our main station. And we're also gonna split the rural and the city fire departments. They've always been co-mingled. It's always been the co-mingled revenue stream, a co-mingled budget, and co-mingled equipment. This is the year we're going to split those off and let the rural fire department be the rural fire department and the city fire department be the city fire department. Uh, the benefit to that is we will have another fully funded fire department in town that we can use for automatic and mutual aid agreements. The salary and benefit portion is gonna get us to eighteen career positions and forty-four paid-on-call positions, a total strength of sixty-two members on the fire department. That's, uh, the highest we've ever been in the past was fifty, was a goal, and we never got to fifty. Uh, I am a hundred percent confident we will get to sixty-two, uh, with the approval of this budget next year in January. That includes one battalion chief or duty officer, four full-time personnel, and ten paid-on-call personnel on duty or on call, scheduled out every single day to give us fifteen-person coverage twenty-four seven, with the additional callback of thirty-six people, or thirty-six firefighters. If, uh, something were to happen like Magellan or the Meadow Ridge Fire where we had multiple buildings on fire, we can call back, uh, quite a bit of personnel and bring a lot of strength to bear at that situation. Our operations budget, three hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars actually is a, uh, represents a four thousand dollar or one percent decrease over last year's budget. Uh, the reason that is, we took out everything that would go to the rural fire department and then we had increased a couple of line items to, uh, meet what we're gonna need for the year. One of them being, uh, the training budget at fifty-eight thousand, four twenty is an increase. There's a couple other increases and a couple other decreases in there. But we feel this is a very economical way to, uh, do our business and it's, uh, an efficiency on the, the department to, uh, uh, moving forward fuel and oil. We know that, uh, that's gonna be pretty high. Some of the vehicle repair costs are pretty high. Um, but breaking it out between the city and rural was the most efficient way to do it. Capital improvements. One of the things we're looking at doing this year is a leasing of apparatus. So, in the past, um, nothing's getting cheaper. So, this new ladder truck we're looking at is gonna be in, in the ballpark of nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, in the past, we've always escrowed those funds and bought that truck with cash. Uh, now, we're looking at lease programs where it's actually a seven-year walk-away lease, where we lease it for seven years. It goes back to the apparatus manufacturer. They sell it off for a profit. We get a truck that's more reliable, less breakdown issues. Right now, uh, we're still phasing out trucks that are thirty years old.
So, do you have a, a lease-to-buy option at the end of that, if, if you find the equipment is something you could do that...
We do.
You can buy it out too?
We can also buy it outright and keep it in our fleet if we want to. Uh, there are, there's one manufacturer we're looking at that actually has a, uh, a twenty-five thousand dollar penalty if we wanted to do that. So, that's one of the things we're taking into consideration before we award a bid on these trucks. So, uh, a new engine on the north end of town. The engine that we have on the north end of town, it's a twenty-fifteen right now, that actually would become a rural asset. It was built for rural firefighting. It has a thousand gallon water tank on it. It's something we don't need in the city. Uh, and then, uh, new administration vehicle to, on a continual, uh, that's, it's on a ten-year renewal basis. We swap those trucks out every ten years. So, it's just, we have one truck that's up right now. So, um, our health and wellness fund, uh, three thousand dollars for gym equipment. We always replenish that fund at the end of every year, uh, depending on what we've spent. And then our building fund, that includes our, a loan through the USDA on that south side fire station. It has a principal of just under, at the end of this year, I'll have just under a million dollar principal left on that. Property taxes. And then we also have a project going on at our central fire station to replace all the concrete that runs along First Street. Uh, that has to be nineteen seventy-five to nineteen eighty-two in that timeframe. All that concrete's starting to get, uh, busted up. So, we're gonna replace that. And then, just some statistics here. So, this overall budget, it represents, uh, sixteen cents per person per day throughout the city. I think it was a total of fifty-nine dollars annually per resident. Uh, just to point out that Fargo is almost a hundred and ten dollars per person per resident. We achieve efficiencies because, uh, that, I mean, that's an apples-apple comparison. It's because of our paid-on-call and our, our, our volunteer staff, they're gonna transition to paid-on-call. Still paying them hourly wages to come and be on call and, and come to calls and go to training is still far less than the sixty-two full-time members would be, uh, extraordinarily larger budget. So, uh, we have applied for grants, uh, through the federal government that, as of right now, it's seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars worth of grants. One of those is for, uh, the new four-person crew that we're putting on to cover their, uh, wages for three years at a seventy-five percent and then a twenty-five percent and twenty-five percent cost share. And also, we have thirty-five thousand dollars worth of improvements for, uh, uh, turnout gear, washers and, washers and extractors and dryers that we would like to put into the stations. It's more of a cancer prevention benefit for the firefighters. Uh, we can't use some residential-grade, uh, washing machines anymore with all the research coming out, uh, about firefighters and cancer. Uh, lastly, we're staring headlong into a forty percent increase in call volume this year. And, uh, when we go out over the next five years, it's gonna, it, it's not a forty percent. It actually increases to about a twenty percent, over sixteen percent, five-year, uh, number. And we look at that and it's gonna give us about nineteen hundred and twenty-four calls, uh, through calendar year twenty nineteen. Uh, eight hundred and fifteen of them being fire alarms and fire calls and another eleven hundred being emergency medical calls. So, we are looking at a busy year next year as well. And with that, any, uh, questions on the budget?
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Any questions, commissioners?
Okay.
I have two comments. First of all...
Yes, sir.
Uh, your budget and your information is extremely well done, Dan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, makes even, uh, new commissioners easy to follow along. So, thank you for that. Um, also want to commend the fire department with all the construction that we have in our community and that you're still maintaining an eighty-eight percent call-out time within, uh, uh, I think that's amazing, uh, because I've been very concerned about that since, uh, everything started in our community when Chris and his boys decided to tear up half the town. And so, I, uh, I commend you and you, I commend you and your officers. And the last thing I would like you to share with the public and, uh, the department heads, uh, your news about your open house coming up.
Yes. So, we do have an open house at our south side fire station. Uh, for the twenty-eighteen budget, we had, uh, approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget to put living quarters in on the second floor. And we, as of today, are ninety-nine point nine percent done.
When is your open house?
Friday at two PM.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, that'll be open to the public. Uh, I believe, I don't know if any, if you guys got your invitations yet. We sent them out in the mail. So, uh, come down, look at the station, look at all the facilities we've put in. Um, really is a very efficient way of doing business. Um, uh, the, the firefighters are very happy with what that station is gonna have now for facilities, especially the fact that they can take a shower there. As simple as that is, we don't have that at our other station. It's something we're actually retrofitting right now. But with the cancer prevention that, that's going out, the statistics that sixty-three percent of all firefighters in the United States are gonna have cancer at some point in their life, uh, the ability to take a shower after a fire on a career basis might actually save someone's life. So...
I toured the facility at the south side with Chief a couple weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I'd encourage the public to go out there and see what those living quarters are going to be like. Uh, there's a room there for some workout equipment and the like and, and meet that team of young men that's, uh, this time it's all young men.
It is.
Yeah, but, uh, yeah, great addition to our community. Thank you, Chief. Any questions to the Chief?
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. This is an action item. So, uh, commissioners, is this an action or just a review?
Um, just a moment. We've done a review and then it included in the overall nineteen budget.
Tina sends it all in at once. Alright, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
We're gonna have a small alteration to our, to our, uh, agenda this evening. I'm gonna call on Tina Fisk, our city administrator, for her report. She has another pressing meeting a little later, uh, very soon. So, Tina?
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Bernie. Um, I just have a couple quick things. Um, Jenna had to leave and I wanted her to give you an update on the compensation study, so I'll try and give you an update on the compensation study. But the other item I wanted to tell you is that, um, just a heads up, if you do get calls tomorrow, beaten drive to Nineteenth, they're going to start pouring that at seven AM tomorrow. That won't affect the street closure that's supposed to take place later tomorrow. That will start at eight-thirty. That will be from Thirteenth Avenue to the interstate. Um, they just need to start in this one spot and it'll help everything go a lot quicker. So, um, that will be going in the morning. Melissa was made aware of it, so she's sending information out. Chris, Chris is aware of it, his staff. So, that should go just fine. But if you have any calls or questions, that's what that's about. Um, the other item is the budget. I've met with some of you. I'll be meeting with more of you in the next few days, Aaron and I. And we'll get through our budget reviews. And then at the next commission meeting, hopefully, we will have our preliminary budget discussion. We'll bring it forward to you and go through it. We have a timeline with the state. We have to get our preliminary budget, more county, but we have to get a prelimi- preliminary budget numbers for our tax-levered funds to the county so that the statements can go out to people to let them know what their proposed estimated tax is. Now, once we set the proposed, the preliminary budget, the difference between the preliminary and the final is that for anything that has a tax levy, once we've approved the preliminary budget, we can move numbers around inside of it, but we can't change the total expenditures. So, not until the end of, in, beginning of next year or once it's approved, then you can amend it if you have another source of income and you've found a way to, to adjust for it. But that's the important part of the preliminary budget is we have to make sure we're comfortable with the total amount of expenditures and then we move forward from there.
I think, Tina, we can go down. We just can't go up.
Correct.
So, we can always go down, which is a good thing. We just can't go up.
That's kind of a tough thing, but that is a good thing. Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, the other item is the compensation study. There's been a lot of questions on where we're at with that. That was approved by the commission quite some time ago. And, um, with a series of events that have been going on at City Hall, we've finally gotten it to the point Jenna has gone through and reviewed all of the different, um, job descriptions and has sent them off to the company that is doing our, our survey. They've gone through them all and rated them all. And it's an interesting scale that they use to rate with. They take everything from hazards in your job to, um, excuse me, to education requirements and years of experience requirements to, I mean, it's just a whole gamut of things and it all creates a total number. And then that gets rolled into dollars on the backend. Now, we don't have that part yet, but we have gone through and seen the total numbers and reviewed a number of the employees as to how their numbers added up. Our next step is to meet with all of the department heads within the next week or so, in week to two weeks, and review how each person was scored and make sure that they're comfortable and that we didn't miss anything and that they're accurate. And then those will be rolled forward and the company will bring us the pay schedules from there. And then what staff will do is we'll sit down, probably Jenna, Aaron, and myself, and sit down, come up with what would be an implementation plan. And then we'll probably bring in different commissioners and kind of vet it and see what your thoughts are. And then we'll bring it forward to you to review. Um, it's just, it's kind of a preliminary process. We intend to be at the very end of it by middle of August to end of August. We'll have it too before then. So, that's the plan as of right now. And I know the employees have been anxiously awaiting. Um, one thing that did happen that helps us a lot is that because Jenna went through in, in detail, well, I should back up. The department heads went and revised all their job descriptions, updated them, gave them to Jenna. Jenna and I went through and reviewed them. And then she went and organized them in such a fashion and sent them to them. But they were very, very pleased. They said the job descriptions were so well put together that it made scoring the positions and getting them accurate a lot easier. So, um, the process is taking a little longer, but it's a good process. And I'm really pleased with this company versus the last one we used. So, um, I just wanted to let you know that that is progress- So, I just wanted to let you know that that is progressing. We met with Bernie and talked about that this morning, but I felt it was important to get the word out there. So, if you have any questions for me?
Tina, how about the benefits? Where do they come into play?
Those are, they're working on those as well. Our benefits that we provide have been sent out to their benefit analysis team or whatever they call it, and they're comparing those with other-like communities. So, the two will come together, and that's part of the whole process. We're doing the one piece and then the other piece, and it'll, it'll come together and we'll be able to show you all of it, but I haven't seen the benefits side yet.
Because that's what we did not do last, that was our mistake last time. We did not do benefits.
Yes, it was missed last time, yes, it was. We asked for some information and it wasn't provided and then we didn't, it wasn't pursued or for whatever reason, so, yes.
And benefits are at thirty-five to forty-two percent of your cost.
Right. So, they're huge, is what I'm kind of saying here.
Yes, sir.
Yes, they are.
Any other questions of Tina? Thank you, Tina.
Thank you very much.
Alright, item number twelve, oh, excuse me, item number eleven. We have staff from the Doherty people, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor Gartas and Commissioners, Mike Mastrom, Doherty and Company. Thank you for your time this evening. We'll do a brief presentation this evening just to talk a little bit about Doherty and Company and some of the work that we've done for the city in the past, as well as the booklet that I handed out earlier outlines, just for your own knowledge and study, the financing options that are available to the city when we come with a project and try to determine how to best finance the project and lower the impact to, of course, the taxpayers in the city of West Fargo. So, I do have with me as well Alan Polsky. Alan is head of trading in investment banking, in the Public Finance Department in Minneapolis. I have Craig Tice with me this evening. Also, Craig is in the Public Finance Department as well. You normally see me come to the city commission meetings, I have the Bismarck, I work in the Bismarck office, but I want you to be aware that these three fellows, the three of us work together on the city of West Fargo issues. It's a team approach to all the work that gets done, and we work closely with the city staff in determining what's the best type of financing to solve the financing needs and come up with the money the city needs for your proposed projects. So, with that, I would like to mention, Alan won't mention it, and we didn't do any bios, but he is a past member of the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board and also past president of the MSRB. That is the division of the SCC that makes the rules. So, when I talk to Alan, I have to follow the rules. And Craig has extensive work in the city, in this area as well, working on public finance and municipal bonds. And I think Alan would like to talk a little bit about Doherty and Company first.
And he'd have the great job following the rule, Commissioner. Mr. Mayor, Commission staff, thank you for having us here today. It's really an honor to be able to present to you even briefly. Just a little bit about Doherty and Company. As background, we really are just here to present ourselves as a resource. You know, we want to be able to get you as much information as possible. As Mike mentioned, Craig's going to run through a very brief overview of the financing options that are available to communities like West Fargo. I think it's a good resource for you to just have in your drawer. I apologize to the room that we don't have a PowerPoint, so you're the only ones who have the presentation at this point, so my apologies for that. I'm going to actually push you to page eight and nine very briefly for my part of the presentation. Doherty and Company's been around for just over forty years. We were founded in 1977. I've been there since 1985, so I'm a longtime resource of the company. My side is really on the capital markets part of the business, so all of the underwriting and sales operation, all the market chatter comes really from my desk. Over the years, we've built really what is a full-service financial services company that does real estate, commercial lending, but really, our core business and the most important part of the business and the only part of the business really that I focus on and largely that these gentlemen focus on is our public finance business. And that business is largely focused in the upper Midwest. You know, our main office is in Minneapolis. Mike is in Bismarck and has been for years where we've operated an office. We have a sales office in Fargo and a sales office in Bismarck as well, so we're part of the, we consider ourselves a part of the North Dakota community. We also have a sales office and a public finance operation in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, where we've been active in the South Dakota public finance market for some time. We do business all around the country, but we think that this is our bread and butter. We think we understand what your needs are and we welcome the opportunity to continue that. So, I don't want to, again, go into a lot of detail about that. Just remind you that we really would like to be a resource for the mayor and the commission. Thank you. Craig, can you give me a little bit more detail?
Mayor, commissioners, thank you for having us. I'm going to keep my part pretty high-level. We're not going to get too far into the weeds in terms of structuring tactics and bonds, everything you have outstanding, those types of items, but just to kind of do a high-level overview of the various tactics and bonding tools that cities such as yourself can use to go out and access capital, whether it be for improvements, expansions, infrastructure and those types of items. For West Fargo, there are five primary issue types that you've historically used, and they're basically ranked in terms of lowest cost of capital, since that's part of our job is to go out and find capital for you at the lowest cost or the lowest interest rate. The first is a special assessment warrants or bonds. A lot of times when you see these, the title of them is refunding improvement bonds. And just recently, we successfully worked with the city staff, Tina and Aaron, and then also John Shockley, on a temporary issue for you guys. These are available primarily for water, sewer, street, parking, flood control. You do use them most often because they do have one of the highest ratings, which results in the lowest cost of capital. Right now, the rating for the city's special assessment bonds are A1 by Moody's. The second type of tax-exempt bonding that the city often uses is, would be a general obligation bond. An example of a general obligation bond might be for a school district issue to build a new school, expansion, renovation. General obligation bonds, basically, it's the full faith and credit of the city, so you're taxing all taxable value within the city. The rating for West Fargo for these types of bonds right now also is A1 rated, so high investment grade. Third type of bonding that the city uses, sales tax revenue bonds. So, this is unlike a full-faith credit-type tax on all taxable value, this is based on your sales tax revenues generated from taxable sales within the cities. These sometimes have a lower rating. In this case, right now, your sales tax bonds are A1 rated. Sales tax bonds, unlike tax, unlimited taxes within the city, require debt service coverage, so you don't get to use all of those tax revenues that come in. You have debt service coverage, you have to fund things like a reserve fund, but these work well for certain projects or uses within the city without putting tax on property. Utility revenue bonds, same sort of revenue-type stream, so you need a revenue stream. In this case, it's water, sewer, garbage. You have debt service coverage, so you leverage your revenue stream, you have some coverage, you fund a reserve fund, but you can use those funds to finance infrastructure improvements in those areas. Currently, utility revenue bonds also have an A1 rating. Tax increment revenue bonds, if there is infrastructure needs within the city, so there's new development, you're going to use the increment or the new incremental tax revenues that come in, and you're going to leverage up that cash flow stream. And also, with like all the other revenue bonds, you do have debt service coverage, so you don't get to sell down to a 1-0, but you want to have some cushion in even valuations fluctuate, you would also fund a reserve fund for these. But for development-type projects where you're increasing value and you're going to have an incremental stream, they come in quite handy. Other tax-exempt bond structures that you haven't used predominantly in the city, but may or may not be available depending upon the source, capital improvement levies, that requires a vote, similar to many of your general obligation bonds will require a vote. Hospitality tax, you do have a hospitality tax based on that revenue stream. You could potentially leverage bonding and create funds for that up against the 1% on your lodging and restaurant tax. That is a revenue fund or revenue bond, so there is coverage requirements as well as reserve fund requirements. Certificates of indebtedness, we can be pretty creative on that front, but for that to work, you really need sort of a federal or state cash flow stream or pledge. So, in anticipation of those pledges or grants coming in, you would leverage against those future cash flow streams for improvement projects. And then, there's lease financing. Oftentimes, there's a nonprofit, there's a lease generated, whether it's a building authority or other, so you have a lease payment stream from a facility or project to be built, and then you would go and sell that against that for a specific project. We really do value the relationship with West Fargo. City staff has been great to work with us as your counsel. The last issue was very well-received. We also participate with the rating agency calls as much as possible to help provide information, decipher some of their findings, since they don't write in perfectly plain language, and then we try to work with you to figure out ways to maintain ratings, improve ratings, and then be creative with financial structuring. So, I want to thank you for the opportunity. My involvement with the city, Mike, as you mentioned, he's primarily the interface, but if it comes to special revenue-type bonds or limited tax, that's where Mike and Alan and I put our heads together and try to be really creative. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mike just to put it in finishing touches. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Craig. And thank you, commissioners, for your time. We'd be happy to answer any questions if you have something quick. I will remind you that the city staff has my email, they have my phone numbers. You guys individually, certainly welcome to call me, and I'm fully aware that I don't always have all the answers, but I do know somebody that has an answer, and it may just be John Shockley, but I'll call. So, if you've got questions, please call me. We can start from there. And on behalf of Doherty and Company, I think if you have any work for the city, I will be back in the near future. You are doing another special assessment issue and will be, that's your annual financing project.
Commissioners, any questions of these gentlemen?
I have one. I always do, right, Mike?
Yeah, absolutely, Mark.
I definitely appreciate what the staff does for us and their expertise, but you know, as you go through this, you guys are the experts and the professionals. And I ask the same question of you every time, Mike, and that is, I want to know how do we get the rating back up, because we lost a rating? You know, that, to me, that's the most important part about your jobs as well, is to help us figure out how to get our rating back up.
We have a ratings call tomorrow to review the city of West Fargo again for the upcoming special assessment bonds, and that's a question we'll ask, and we'll get back to you with our answer, Mark. It'll be similar to what you've read in the last few rating reviews, of course, but we're always asking, and I'd like to return to you.
The problem with that is now being the finance commissioner, I get to get even more involved, so it's kind of like I met with Aaron, it's kind of a trick question or a trick answer, because you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. Either way, you get penalized, so there's got to be some, some way to get it up without being penalized.
They will outline the steps to us, and we, and you know, actually, the city of West Fargo is growing the community, and that's really what they're looking for is the growth of the community.
If I may, Mark, one item, so when they'll have the recommendations, what could improve the rating, the criteria, they will lay that out. You guys have experienced exponential growth, I think that's putting it lightly. Part of what we've seen in other instances with cities like yourself, some of it, it's a little bit of time just for things to stabilize, because the rating analysts, we work with them all the time, they're very skeptical, and that's their job, unfortunately. But they give you the benefit of the doubt, and then what they want to see is, once the improvements are completed, once, whether it be sales tax or your general tax base starts to grow and valuations continue to trend correctly, that's when we can be creative and work with you in terms of how you want to go out and get new capital, to be maybe creative and go down different avenues or other, but then really help and assist with demonstration that that growth has led to a new stabilized sort of base value. And that will get them the comfort to maybe remove negative, all looks to positive, and then you can start to move back up that rating ladder.
What frustrates me is when I read them for Moody's and they say you're growing, you know, that's a great thing, but you're also growing your debt. That's not a good thing.
Correct.
And then, when it talks about, well, can you pay your debt off? Yeah, but that's not a good thing either sometimes. So, it's kind of frustrating when you read those, what can we do to make it better? That's all I ask of you folks is to help us figure that out.
Correct.
So, what was our rating before?
A triple, three, triple?
No, we've had higher ratings when we've had the issues insured, but basically, the city of West Fargo is a standalone, not buying underwriters insurance, it's been an A-rating, A1, and for a community your size, that's, that is the rating. Ratings are also dependent upon demographics and population base as well. We have had, Mark, just so you know, two communities in North Dakota did receive upgrades recently, so, and that's because of economic issues that finally stabilized for those communities as well.
Who were those communities, Mike?
Valley City and Williston also received an upgrade recently. And that's, of course, the oil impact has settled down and they've learned that rating agencies are beginning to understand how that works, so to speak, and then some of the other cities just ran down their general funds to a low balance because of, let's say, Valley City, for what was a flood issue, they had to spend their money for the dike years ago, and of course, they got, when they depleted their general fund, they decreased their rating, but they rebuilt their general fund and the city's back up, and the rating agencies do come back in and look at issues on a regular basis.
Just so I'm correct, we lost a rating a while back here, right? We went down one?
You went from a double-A3 to a double-A1.
There you go, a double-A3.
To an A1, correct.
Yeah, okay, so.
And that's basically the debt, which is a result of your tremendous growth.
Okay, so, again, I'd just like the information to help us get us back up to that rating.
Absolutely.
We want to be the best.
Understood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioner Simmons brings up a great point, and I know that's been a great part of my dialogue with Tina and the like, and of course, you and I being on finance together with her, but we'll be continuing to work on the debt that the city has incurred and how we can find ways to pay that off in a quicker fashion, yes. Next item again is final plat approval of Oak Ridge Sixteenth Edition, a re-plat. Mr. Solberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do not have any changes, oh, excuse me, you haven't seen this yet, I'm sorry. Thought we saw this before. Oak Ridge Sixteenth is a replat of three lots north of Cashwise on Thirty-second Avenue East. They are just moving some lot lines to accommodate development of any, one of the lots on there. They're going to develop a restaurant on one of those lots, and so, they need to accommodate that for a bigger lot. And nothing major within it, they've met all requirements, planning commission has hereby recommended approval of the plat. Hold up if you have any questions.
Any questions for Tim? In a general terms, Tim, would you explain to the public where these lots are located on that, on the strawberry patch?
This is, well, yeah, I guess, one of, a couple of strawberry patches we have in our community. This is directly north of Cashwise Foods, Thirty-second.
Oh, excuse me, yeah.
Thirty-second Avenue East has a turn in there that you come into Cashwise, and the lot that is just being increased in size is this Lot Three right here, so. There is no development on those sites currently, so there's no concern for any non-conformities created by this plat.
Very good. Any other questions of Tim? What are your wishes?
Will be approved.
Thank you, Brad. Is your second?
Second.
Moved in second, thank you, Mike. Moved in second to approve with the recommendations of the city and Tim's department. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item of business, item number thirteen, final plat approval of the Wilds Tenth Edition subdivision and re-plat. Tim?
Thank you, Your Honor and commission members. This subdivision is, initially was a rezoning that was requested within the Wilds to accommodate what was required of the Wilds Ninth to have a connection down to Horace. We were concerned as staff throughout development of the Wilds that there was not much connection down to, what would be Sixty-Fourth Avenue South in Horace, and they've since removed all the housing within this to just accommodate the road. On this map here that I'm going to show you, it looks like a goofy plat, but really what they're doing, this road, and you can kind of just see that shaded out there would be Ninth Street West, and it adds a connection to a platted right-of-way within Horace here that gets down to Sixty-Fourth. Well, we wanted to make sure that there was another one to another existing platted right-of-way in Horace so that we had additional exits to the south to Sixty-Fourth. The main reason for that is if they ever choose or look at vacant The main reason for that is if they ever choose or look at vacating that portion of the road, we now have a say in their ability to vacate that portion of that road, because there's a platted right-of-way to it. We think that's important for emergency responders, potential construction projects, et cetera, to make sure we maintain that right-of-way.
Have there been any discussions with Horace about that at all?
There has been discussion. This new commission has not probably been engaged with discussions with them. I know our city engineer, our city attorney, public works director, planning has all been involved in that, but we hope to continue that.
I'm aware that there has been discussions. I just wanted you to communicate it to the public. Thank you. Any other questions of Tim? Your pleasure, please. Motion to approve. Thank you, Mike. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Eric. It's been moved and seconded to approval of, or excuse me, the final plat approval of the Wilds Tenth Edition subdivision and replat. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number fourteen is the approval subject to conditions listed in staff report for a conditional use permit for an accessory building greater than 1,000 square feet within the R-1E rural estate zoning district. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Your Honor and Commissioners. In this instance, the applicant here is proposing to build a 1,619 square foot accessory structure on a 1.36 acre lot. Within the R1E district, the rural estate district, accessory structure up to 1,000 square feet is a permitted use. Anything above that is a conditional use. A conditional use really allows property to develop something. However, it requires review, public hearing at Planning Commission, and then we bring it to City Commission for final approval. I initially had placed these on consent agenda, because it's a pretty standard thing for the accessory structures, however, was noted by both Commissioner Thorsted and Commissioner Simmons, we should bring those down to regular agenda to review them and go forward with them. We can generally go through these quickly, however, if there's property owners who've had an issue or comment, they generally have been given an opportunity to make comment, even though there isn't a public hearing. With this case, we had notified property owners within 350 feet per our ordinance, received no comments on this one. It's very typical within this neighborhood to have something of around this size. So with regard to criteria for granting a conditional use, no concerns were noted by staff. Also want to note that there's a small typo in the conditional use permit that I have in your packet. We actually file a conditional use permit on the record of the property. John Shockley's office prepared this for us, and we've done it for a number, two, three years, and that basically provides that use as a permitted use in perpetuity. So when they go to sell their property and they do a title search, shows up as now a permitted use on that property. We got to clear up a little typo on that, just unintentionally includes language intended for a different conditional use. At the July tenth, 2018 meeting, Planning Commission held a public hearing, reviewed the application, and are hereby forwarding our recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Tim. Any additional questions for Tim? Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Mike, a motion to approve. Thank you, Mark. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Eric. It's been moved and seconded for, to approve the conditional use permit for an accessory building greater than 1,000 square feet within the R-1E rural estate zoning district with the staff recommendations. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of subject to conditions listed in a staff report of a conditional use permit for the accessory buildings greater than 1,600 square feet within an RR rural residential zoning district. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a little bit different, rural residential lots are, need to be greater than four or five acres in size. Excuse me, I think it might be two and a half acres, yeah? Two and a half acres in size. So within this district, they allow them to be up to 1,600 square feet as a permitted use and greater as a conditional use, permitted use. Within the Nelson Acres subdivision for which this is in, we've had some larger-sized buildings up to about 4,000 square feet as a max. This is a proposed 2,520 square foot structure on a 4.29 acre lot. Property owners within 350 feet were notified, no comments have been received to date. We do, within our process through Planning Commission, when it gets to this size, just make sure we notify them and have them acknowledge through signing the conditional use permit of our home occupation standards, because such a large structure really maybe causes the next homeowner who may be looking at this property to think it could be a good place to have home occupation, I think. So we just want to make sure they're notified of that. With that, Planning Commission at their July tenth, 2018 meeting held a public hearing and are hereby forwarding their recommendation for approval subject to conditions in the staff report.
Do you hear anything from the neighbors at all?
Oh, sorry, no, we did not receive any comment from the neighbors.
Any other questions of Tim? Chair would entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Eric. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Brad, it's been moved and seconded to approve a conditional use permit for an accessory building greater than 1,600 square feet within the RR rural residential zoning district with the staff recommendations. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number sixteen, approval of a conditional use permit for a home occupation chiropractic office. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Your Honor. We received this application to accommodate a resident who would like to operate a chiropractic office out of her home. The applicant is seeking to provide chiropractic service out of her home office. City's provisions for home occupation allow for businesses which have customers coming to a site as a conditionally permitted use. We've typically received this sort of request for in-home hair salons, but have also recently included a massage service. We've seen gun dealers do this. People that have typically buy appointment-only type of hours, the applicant here stated in her application she would do minimal hours and would not make any outward changes to the home, with the exception possibly of a small sign on the inside of the front door, which would be allowed under our provisions up to one square foot. Property owners within 350 feet here were notified. We did receive a call from a developer in the area, because it's a developing area, with concern on traffic. We talked to him a little bit about what would occur here, and his concerns were eased once finding out more about the intent here of the application. With regard to the criteria for granting a conditional use permit, no concerns were noted by staff. We did review their floor plan, and it looks like they're just going to use the home office for this, so it doesn't take up much of the space. At the July tenth, 2018 meeting, Planning Commission held a public hearing, reviewed the application, and are hereby recommending approval with the conditions noted in the staff report. We have also included in our conditional use permit something that we used with the massage parlor that we had. Same thing, there are concerns that people would be coming there using it typically like a commercial property, that if there is to be a sale or conveyance of the property in any manner, that it could be revoked or reviewed, or if there are four or more complaints received within sixty days, it could be reviewed or revoked. We just want to make sure it remains a neighborhood and not a business, and it's kind of the intent between a home occupation to make sure that they are consistent with the neighborhood and not looking like a business. So for that, I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you, Tim. Questions for Tim?
Yeah, Tim, I called you on this one earlier, so I wanted you to explain kind of the difference, because I don't want to, make sure we don't set no precedent. We already turned one down a few years back, and I, optical place that wanted you to do business on Seventh Avenue. So can you explain the difference between this one and, I don't want to put them on the spot, but that way, so people understand, you know?
Yeah. Well, I think in that case, we have number two in 4-4 for right are provisions for home occupation that pretty clearly states, "The use of the dwelling unit for the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and subordinate to its use for residential purposes by its occupants, and not more than 25% of the main floor area of the dwelling unit shall be permanently set aside to be used in the conduct of the home occupation." I think in that case, it was clearly subordinate to have anything other than the business in there. It was really, it turned a home into a business. And we've seen that also. Commissioner Simmons and some daycare providers have found that it's cheaper maybe to rent an apartment than it is to actually purchase a commercial property, and so that, this portion of our ordinance, hopefully we catch it. We don't know if we catch it, because there's not a complaint or something like that, but would restrict people from using their homes as actual full-on businesses.
I think by all means, we want to be fair, and we have to also remember, you know, fairness goes both ways in reference to businesses that have overhead with offices as well, and yet at the same time, provide these people, if they want to do something in their home, as long as it's fair across the board for everybody. That's my concern.
With the rates of commercial property in our community and throughout the country, I think we may see more of these, and I believe that our home occupation standards are really well-written, and I think we're doing a good job of keeping on top of those, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
One of the biggest concerns I would have for the neighborhood is parking.
So there's one practitioner, there's one chiropractor working out of this facility?
Yes, and that's another part of our home occupation standards that are also well-written. No person other than the members of the family residing on the premises shall be engaged in the occupation as well. So I could see maybe a pair of, husband and wife or something, that might both be chiropractors could potentially want to do something like this. Well, they would also then have to meet our parking requirements. In this case, it's one per, or five spaces per provider, which is a little excessive for this, but they still need to meet it, and this property has available parking for six people on that property, so. It's going to be a mess, though, while they're building over there, because there's not many parking spaces open when there's building going on. This area is starting to be filled out, so I think they'll be all right.
Any other questions of Tim? Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Your second, please?
I'll second.
Second by Eric. Been moved and seconded that we approve the conditional use permit for a home occupation of a chiropractic office as presented by Mr. Solberg. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other commissioners have anything to come before the meeting this evening? Anything for the good of the order? All right. Chair would entertain a motion for adjournment.
A move?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.